No, she chaired February.
Good afternoon.
It's March.
So, wait, which minutes are they?
Yeah, no, it's March, but this is a special meeting, not the regular meeting.
She chaired the regular.
Yeah. Hey, everybody. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Thursday, March twenty seventh, four P M. Meeting of the City of Muskegon's Planning Commission. Special meeting today. Okay, roll call, please. Commissioners Johnson.
Here.
Garan. Willat Leroy.
You're here.
Here. Cypher.
Here.
Keener. Mazade. Montgomery Keast.
Here.
Blake.
Here.
Anne Simmons.
Here.
Okay, and then we have approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of March thirteenth.
I'll move to approve the minutes represented.
This actually says twenty twenty four.
Oh, yes, March thirteenth of twenty twenty five, please.
And then motions for.
Yep.
We.
We need to correct who chaired the meeting last month, or not last month, but at a regular meeting this month. So that's all. I don't know if you can just do it administratively, or we need to incorporate that into the motion. That's a question to you, Sarah.
I would probably word discussion.
Okay.
All right, I'll move to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of March thirteenth, twenty twenty four with correction.
Twenty twenty five.
Oh, twenty five. With correction of the chair to leave.
Reflectly, yeah. Yeah. Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion passes. Moving on to public hearings.
Since we have the, uh, yeah, point of order, um, since we have the, uh, the gentleman here for five, five, one, Young, do we want to do that one first, or?
We have the latitude to move that up. I suppose we could go back into old business first. Item five. So we have case twenty twenty five dash ten, request for a special use permit to operate a marijuana retailer with drive-through at five fifty one Young Avenue. So this is also a public hearing?
Nope.
Corrected or we're just revising? Okay, coming back. So can you give us a background where we're at?
Yes, we did have the public hearing already, so that was closed. There were no comments from the public at the public hearing. We did have a couple of items that were outstanding, though, that, uh, we wanted the applicant to look into. They have started working with the engineering department on the stormwater permit, so that doesn't look like it's going to be too much of an issue, uh, that we thought it might be. We wanted to look into the fence that's going over the Paper Street, uh, Temple Street. And the engineering department doesn't have a problem with that. And they said that they could let them use that, uh, if they improve it, and as long as they daisy chain the fence. And what they mean by that is they want it to be able to be unlocked by separate keys by either the drain commissioner, the engineering department, or the fire department. In one lock, we'll be able to. One of their individual locks will be able to unlock everything, so as long as we have that as a condition, there should be no issue. We did have the letter from the drain commissioner, they are okay with having those structures on there. They did revise the, um, site plan, and they show the bike lane, which, uh, I like the design of, that they didn't go and take it. Put it where the cars are going to be, it's kind of its own separate thing. So you can see that on the site plan. And. The storage containers, uh, that still needs to be addressed, but I put that as a condition, if you are inclined to put it that way, that they are either properly stored or removed, and, uh, I'm not too worried about having that language in there because it's ultimately something that will need to be addressed before we give them their marijuana certificate for their retail store, and that says that you've got to be in compliance with everything in, on the site plan, uh, before we can give that to you. So that's something we would withhold. Now, what he can do is either remove them from the property, uh, or he is also, um, throwing out the idea that he may, uh, store shipping containers on site as a business, which is allowed. You would need to be, have a business license from the clerk. This is an industrial business or zone, so that would be allowed, but you do have to screen storage from residential and the right-of-way. So you could either accomplish that by a five-foot privacy stockade fence, or by putting them behind the building.
So do I have a, well, I guess the question is, what's the motion here, since it's not a hearing, we're simply approving it? Okay. Can we move on to discussion, though? Go ahead.
I move that the requests are a special use permit, so that we may proceed with debate and discussion. I move that the requests are a special use permit to operate a marijuana retailer with drive-through at five thirty-one Young Avenue be approved with the following conditions. One, a new stormwater permit is issued with engineering department. Two, the temporary storage containers are either removed from the site, or they obtain compliance through the necessary procedures. And three, the property owner provides a daisy chain on the existing fence to allow the public works department, fire department, and drain commissioner to access, um, drain commissioner, otherwise known as the water resources commissioner, to access the site if needed.
Support.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, I just have, uh, I do still have a question, and I know Destiny's not here today, um, Commissioner Keener. However, there was some discussion about safety on site for the staff that'll be running across the parking lot from the sheds to inside, um, and also the storage of money. I'm not so sure, um, that the design is as safe as it could be. And I, I know that we're just working right here on the land use component here, but, um, I just wanted to throw that out there for some thought.
Any other commentary at the moment? I have a couple of questions. One, there's a bike rack, I believe, shown on the right side of my screen, just to the right of the driveway, that's a bike rack, yeah? But that's far away from the bike path entrance, which I, I don't know if that's a permanent installation item, but it just seemed closer to the road, which kind of defeated the purpose of separating it from the driveway. And then, for the public street situation, I guess the question is, is, is this still considered a public street? And so, we're allowing this to be fenced essentially, so long as we have access, but we're then removing the, the opportunity for it to be a public street. So, wouldn't we want to be looking at vacating that instead? Any ideas or thoughts there?
Normally, I would think a vacation would be appropriate, but the engineering department seemed to think that we are never going to be installing a street here, so.
Okay. Okay, do we have any other examples, I guess, of where we have non-paved public streets that we fence off?
Well, I just want to piggyback on that, what, uh, the planning manager said, because you indicated that engineering suggested that they don't think would ever put a road in there. So if that's the case, why, what would be the drawback or, or negatives of pursuing a, a vacation, uh, you know, vacating it entirely? If we don't ever expect to actually put a road through there?
I mean, it's, it's reserving our right to, if for some reason we wanted to extend the road in the future. There might not be a reason to do it now, but that doesn't mean, in the future, there wouldn't necessarily be a need if we wanted to connect, um, Temple, it's Temple, right, that would be bringing through, um, down to Delano. It's probably just a reservation of rights more than anything else. It may be more beneficial for the applicant to vacate it for himself, in his own knowledge, to know in the future it's going to be available. Probably more important on his side than ours.
So it's still, that option's still available to them, if they want to pursue it, and then goes through the process and whatever protocols or, um, filings and so on and so forth need to be done. They could take that initiative themselves, okay?
Does the current date of the property include the street? I guess that's the question, is this fence has arisen at some point, and so, and when a vacation occurs, usually I believe it's divided down the middle unless there's an agreement between the adjoining party. So, in a way, they're also preventing access from others. So anyway, it's one of those things where, I don't want to set a precedent, I'm just like, well, there's a fence here, and so, it's too much work to figure out what should be here. So I, I think we at least need to identify what the situation is, that we recognize that this is a public street that is not used, something to that nature. And then, so the bike rack, public road, uh, landscaping plan, I think those were, those are the only notes that I had, just not super keen on the. I could imagine if it was a, you know, city property, for example, that was not being used as a public street, and we were basically saying, you know, sure, you can come through here because it's not regularly used, but we're preventing people from having this access, they don't really know that they could.
If engineering's okay with it right now, I, I don't see a problem with that at all. And I do see what you're saying is, you know, maybe someday, um, we will, you know, want to use that, um, to connect those straits. So it's safer just to leave it alone right now.
Uh, where is the fence? Can you, can you, on, on this image right now, can you tell me where that, that fence perimeter is?
Fence, basically under the word, on the numbers, two hundred and forty square foot.
Two, okay, it's right there, but where is it to the, the western, yeah, western edge, like running north and south? So that looks like that's running east and west, or maybe I'm getting my directions wrong, but perpendicular to that, where's the perpendicular?
Basically, right.
Right on the line.
Right on the, just, yeah, because this is at an angle, so it's pretty much right on the line, so the, the.
Okay, so, because I'm just wondering, like, the entrance. I wish I could take a arrow or highlighter to, to, so y'all know what I'm talking about and show, but right where your cursor is, right that, that second, so, the middle line. So is that the middle of the road, and then to the right and to the left, that would be the, the full width of what the platted road is? In such case, the, the entrance where it says two hundred and forty square feet is on their half of the road if it were ever to be vacated? You following?
Can you answer that?
Yeah, yes, so, the right-of-way's thirty-four feet, we're utilizing the seventeen-foot, then driveway's a hundred percent on it. So I, I guess if we're, I wish I had something too. If you look at the middle dotted line, that is exactly where.
That's the center line of the road, okay. Um, and the fence is to the, do we have a directional on this map? To the left. To the top is north, so it is north, okay. So to the, just to the west, um, of, the fence is to the west of that, though, so.
You can actually see in the street view, there, there's, there's no curb there, and that's where the fence is.
So the fence is almost right at the center line, too, then? Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, knowing that the entrance is firmly on, if, if it were ever were to be vacated, and the entrance, knowing that the entrance is, is on your half of the roadway, if it were to be vacated, then I'm more comfortable if we were to move forward with this.
And, um, also just to maybe put some other mind cities, looking at the county G I S, in that instance, yes, the, the easement's there for the road, or the, the road right-of-way is there. But the way that the property lines are done in that instance, it's as if the road is not there, and the fence is on that property line. So if, if you go just north of Young on Temple, the property lines take into account the right-of-way. South of Young, they do not, so it's, it's as if the road isn't there. So it, so I think that would answer that question, if it was to be vacated, the fence is in the correct location.
Is it possible to grant an, like, a specified easement, basically? Again, it's just one of those matter of a, a street with a gate on it, because either should not be a street, a street, or there shouldn't be a gate when it's a public street.
I mean, that, the property owner probably would want to pursue that for their own benefit, um, and, and protection, I suppose, but, um, what we are approving is a special, um, land use permit, so it is subject to, you know, revocation if needed be, but, um, I think that, that's probably more of a concern on the applicant's part, of whether or not they want to get a, a recorded easement. But it is a public street, so I don't know if that's really necessary, but.
Yeah, you can see the fence right on there.
Yeah, and, I mean, and the, the other thing is, the fence is existing. It's an existing environment, it's not like it's being added. So I'm assuming there was a fence permit at some point. Because it, we don't know exactly when the fence went in.
Okay.
A lot of people put in fences without permit.
They're.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
Last suggestion, what about a timeline on the gate approval, just so that, again, it's something that isn't sitting there forever, and people have the opportunity to address it. Just your thoughts, or what would it be?
Not following.
Um, so the, basically, the gate approval with the lock is the condition, and so we want that to be indefinite, or is there for a period of time? Currently would be indefinitely.
The way I would.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah.
So long as the permit is in effect.
Right into the motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, yeah, I don't, I would say it doesn't expire.
And he doesn't get the permit to operate without meeting all those conditions, so, um, he has to do it.
Any other thoughts?
He wants to operate.
Roll call, please.
No, this is just retail, just, I just was double checking, because usually a lot of times there are special land use permits for marijuana-related things, we have like order control, but this is just retailing, um, for the, for this permit.
Right.
Okay, roll call, please. Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Montgomery Keast?
Oh, yes.
Cypher?
Yes.
Willat Leroy?
Yes.
Anne Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you for joining us, you're welcome to hang out. We're going to go back to the top of the agenda.
Permit approved. Take care.
Okay. Oh. Ready? Staff report. Hearing case twenty twenty five dash one six.
So staff initiated request to amend section twenty one oh one of the zoning ordinance to require the zoning administrator to review all P U Ds, uh, for accuracy before a certificate of occupancy can be issued for any building. We've run into some issues over the years of this happening, most notably with the Harbor Town, um, most recently, the Harbor Town development where the sidewalks weren't put in for about forty years, and now we're making them. I'm going to a meeting tonight about that, for a, a special assessment for that, and, um, we have looked into other communities, what they've done, and some of them put a clause in there that the zoning administrator has to, uh, sign off on the plans before a certificate occupancy can be issued from the building department. We worked with City of Coopersville, we know somebody that used to work there, so they helped us out, and, um, we kind of modeled it after theirs, but it's something that's pretty common in a lot of different zoning ordinances, so. In section twenty one oh one, after the P U D development time limits, we're, I'm proposing that we put in the P U D plan compliance. Uh, and that would state that the zoning administrator shall ensure compliance with all of the provisions and requirements of the P U D plan and construction and placement of all the improvements therein before a certificate, certificate of occupancy is issued for any building within the P U D.
Okay. So, as a public hearing, um, this, sorry, this one gets confusing for me, it's not direct. Basically, we open this up to the public at this point, right now? Okay, so there is nobody here in the audience, if you could not see that from home, so if anybody would like to call in, we'll give you an opportunity to do that, two, three, one, seven, two, four, six, seven, two, one. If you'd like to speak to this public hearing, we'll give folks a few minutes to call from home. We need a Jeopardy theme song, it's not fun. Give it another minute. And if you're just joining us, we're taking phone calls for the public hearing. Nothing coming in?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Support.
Motion to support to close the public hearing, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, say no? All right, public hearing is closed.
Where's the motion?
I'll do it. I move that the requests amend, to amend section twenty one oh one of the zoning ordinance is recommended to the city commission for approval as proposed.
Support.
Moved in support, any discussion?
Thank you. And thank you to the planning department for bringing this forward, and our city manager for working on it, and I had a conversation with them last year about, you know, what can we do to better ensure compliance with our, our planning, our P U Ds, um, and the conditions that the planning commission, the city commission attaches to them, um, and so I appreciate this being brought forward. I do have a couple of questions, um, one of which were references, um, so I'm just going to read it, uh, it is on the screen, but read it for anyone that, uh, maybe at home watching or elsewhere. Uh, so it's being looked at as adding is P U D plan compliance, the zoning administrator shall ensure compliance with all of the provisions and requirements of the P U D plan and construction and placement of all of the improvements therein before a certificate of occupancy is issued for any building within the P U D. So my question is with regard to, where it says, um, uh, placement of all the improvements therein, uh, so you're ensuring compliance with all the provisions and requirements of the P U D plan and construction and placement of all the improvements therein. What do all of the improvements entail? What does that, what does that mean, improvements? Is that just the public amenity or public facing improvements? Is that meaning every aspect of the P U D, um, that was called out, meaning all those things were built, um, even if they were like just private, um, you know, buildings, not, not public facing?
I think it's up to the zoning administrator to interpret where they should be on that plan, obviously, if it's the first building of many going in, where they can't, and they had a public amenity, like a bike path or something. Obviously, that bike path couldn't go in right away because it would get damaged with the construction of the other buildings, so I think the way that this is worded, it kind of leaves it up for interpretation for the zoning administrator to make a, a, a reasonable call on what should be completed. Now, if it's just one building, we should be looking at the building itself, the direct amenities around it, the bike racks, the parking, the landscaping, any lighting directly out in front of it. But if it's things that are going to take, oh, it's a larger project, and it takes more coordination, like streetlights all up and down the property, obviously, that can't, that's not feasible to have that all in there.
I kind of like the word improvements because it is sort of all encompassing. I mean, that's the way I understood it, that gives you the leeway.
And as you get farther and farther into the P U D, the more important that, that bike path, or whatever it's going to be, is going to be, need to be completed before that final building gets the C of O. Just kind of give a little context, um, for how I use this in previous communities, um, as was alluded to, um, when I was the planning director and city manager in Coopersville, we had a, a similar portion of our P U D ordinance, and, uh, there's a housing development that was going in. And before each house got its C of O, I would have to go out with the checklist, like where the street trees in place, where this, was the sidewalk put in, um, was the grass put in, things like that, and then sign off on it for each individual, um, C of O, now, that's different, those are single-family homes, individual C of Os, but to what the planning director was stating, it, there is that discretion there to make sure that things are being met the way that they need to be. It could also be going forward with P U Ds, because this is in the ordinance, uh, it can also be put in as a condition that the zoning administrator has to sign off on specific things, um, within, within the, within the, um, conditions. That, that, that's, that's another additional layer there.
Yeah, and it also protects the property owner as well. I mean, you don't want him to keep working on something when you're not in compliance, and you're going to make him rip it out and start over, so, it's good for them, too.
So, to, to follow up, um, and it's good to know that you're, starting out that your interpretation is this does give you that discretion to issue C of Os here, require improvements, issue them, that's not how it reads, so that's, I, I want to square that, like, this does not, this seems inflexible, and it does not give you that discretion. Because it says the zoning administrator shall ensure compliance with all of the provisions and requirements of the P U D plan and construction and placement of all of the improvements therein before a certificate of occupancy is issued for any building within the P U D. So the current phrasing does not give you that latitude of discretion, as I read it, I'm going to interpret it, so, if that's the intent, then I think we need to revise the language to reflect that, or give you that, 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 that discretion or flexibility.
I would also basically ask about kind of the order of operations as well, right? So when you have a, a multi-building property, and maybe you are looking for occupancy of, again, a portion of it. It seems that there's an opportunity to order things in a way that allow you to skip out on things.
So if we just took out the word "all" and just said, of the P U D plan and construction and placement of the, of improvements therein before a certificate of occupancy, would that free that up a little more?
My mind's still stuck on what she just said, so can we revisit that just a moment, Jill? Can you, can you hold on to that? Following what, um, our chair just said, if it were, because what it was described as earlier, like, okay, you can get this phase done, but we're not going to ensure compliance with these other things. But you get this phase done, we'll give you C of O, phase two, C of O, these things aren't done still, but we need them done before phase three, and what I think you just suggested is if they just bailed on phase three, never did it, then we've lost our, our stick, so to speak. Well, that's where you talk about, if you do conditional, what does that look like if you give a conditional C of, C of A to a condo building that people are living in? And now we're saying, hey, we're going to revoke that certificate of occupancy, because you haven't finished doing the, the things that were required within the P U D.
If, um, I, so, one thing that we had in, in the other ordinance that I worked under was performance guarantees. Now, we rarely use that, but it was a tool that was there that if we were concerned about something, we could force the developer to, um, do some type of a deposit, or do some type of performance guarantee, that we could go get, that we could go get money from a bank to go finish what it was they didn't do. Um, a, a letter of credit, sorry, I was drawing a blank, I was drawing a blank on what it was there for a second. We didn't generally exercise that because it was a, um.
It's a nice stick.
But, 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 but it, but it, it was there, um, and the only time that we ever did it was that letter of credit, and then once they performed what they were supposed to perform, we basically ripped it up, and it wasn't, it wasn't there anymore. So that, um, that's something that could be there, I don't think, it could only be something that could be applied to P U Ds in the future.
With the letter of credit.
Yeah, like, like, like kind of the stick part of it, yeah. Yeah, but that's something that some communities do, it is permissible.
How does that, given corporate, so it's a condition that you add on to? How does that get incorporated to conditionally add on to the PUD, what does that language look like? Like off the top of your head, or like, how would that be structured?
It just, it says, um, that, 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 that the planning commission, um, or the, sorry, that city commission on the recommendation, the planning commission may. Um, require a performance guarantee and then those, that can be either a deposit of money, a letter of credit. Uh, probably, those would be the, the main two, and that those can be exercised at a, you know, at the commission's discretion.
Is that something that necessitates the zoning ordinance to be amended to enable that, or is that something that's already? An option that we could be exercising as we're approving PUDs as, as it stands?
In my experience, it's something that is in the local ordinance, but is consistent with planning and zoning enabling act.
So we're a firmer footing if it were explicitly called out as.
But I'm also not the planning director here, so I don't know how our planning staff, because that would be. Um, Mike's call on how he interprets that in the planning act.
About needing a, I would think the language would need to be in there.
In, in, in the ordinance, yeah, okay.
And we've seen language like that.
And I would also think it might need to be relevant per occupied structure. Right, because again, you have to approve each occupied structure, and so the question is, is when would that be? Released that, that requirement, when would it be released, the final building, right?
So generally, with a, with a multi, well, with, with a multi-unit building, Mike, it would be. You're not necessarily getting COOs per floor, you're getting C of O for the whole building. Yeah, so, and so if, if it's a multi-phase of buildings. You're still, it, it's, it's still limited to really the structure you're looking at, and maybe not, not the entire thing, so if someone was. But that's where the performance guarantee comes in, if someone was to bail on a PUD. You wouldn't release that performance bond or that letter of credit until it was all done, and if they bailed, then you would go. Use that letter of credit to complete the. Uh, the public parts of it, or the, yeah.
I really, here's the thing, I think the frustration that I've experienced with the public over the years, a lot of it has to do with. You know, the promises that the public feels that they are, are coming soon, right, like, okay, let's just be patient and we have this thing to look forward to. And then when that doesn't happen, even if other things do happen, there's a feeling of a sense of loss. So I feel that the opportunity to say, we all decided that that was a great opportunity for the public, and we as. The public want to keep moving forward with it, and so that's the benefit we get out of approving the development, if, if that fails to continue. We can move forward with the public portion of it, right, rather than having to scrap the whole idea. Um, so, I'm, I'm very much interested in, in taking that forward as long as it's something that we can actually put into practice. Um, and apply across the board.
Not necessarily relevant to this discussion, but I would think that. If that was to be implied, we'd be, we would need to, the commission, the city commission would be needing to be very specific about what the performance. Guarantee was for, so whether it's for sidewalks or a bike trail or street trees.
Specific amenity.
Yeah, specific amenity that might not be met there, um, and, yeah.
And maybe even to review and agree that yes, we want to go forward, knowing that the development will not. It also seems that there might be a point of, okay, let's bring, you know, the letter of, of credit back and say, okay, we have this available to us. Do we want to exercise it? Or do we wanna, for whatever circumstances, um, I know that's additional steps of things, but, um. I think it gets to the point of the matter, which is getting the thing that the people expected at the end of the day.
So, are you still wordsmithing this?
Well, I'm wondering in light of what we just heard from the city manager about. Language regarding performance guarantees, letters, credits, and needing to incorporate that into the ordinance itself before we could add that as a condition, or just on firmer footing. Uh, before adding that as any conditions on future PUDs, it would make sense to just like refer this back to staff for. Adding that, you know, as well while we're amending this, um, and potentially, um, giving them opportunity to, to look at the, the language of the existing, um. Proposed amendment, um, for fine tuning or, we better reflect the intent of having that latitude or. Uh, you know, reasonable discretion, um, as projects are moving forward, because I, I do think it's unreasonable. The way I read it, it seems very strict and rigid and says, you will not get certificates of occupancies unless you've completed every single thing first. And we know, like, these mega projects that are multi-hundred millions of dollars, they're in phases and they need to get this done. You know, and a lot of the performers are based upon, get this phase done, it's gonna start generating capital, that capital can then be used to, uh. Fund those improvements, and so I do think it's sensible to have some flexibility in there, um. And discretion, I just don't see how this language provides that, um, it seems strict.
Uh, I, I just want to go on the record for one thing, the, the, so, sort of how it's worded now, Mike did talk to me about this, so it's. Um, so one of the reasons that the performance stuff wasn't in there was after we had talked, but then also Sarah just pointed out. That we do have another point in our zoning ordinance that has performance guarantees in it already. Oh, yeah, that, that works, that works better than emailing it to me, um, she's gonna pull it up right now.
And I think another thing to consider too is, is the phasing, is it that there's so much latitude in the phasing? Right, and that's where things get messy.
And that, and that could be, and it depends on the, um, the type of PUD that you're doing, and, and the, the nature of. A built-out city like Meskegan is we don't do a ton of PUDs, um, where, except for now. But, but when, but like, when, when you look at more suburban areas, they do a lot of PUDs and it's very specific on how things are phased in. But you're also building in farmland and it's a little bit easier and it's, it's different, um, so, performance guarantee, section twenty-three, twenty-five.
Yep, that pretty much covers what you were talking about, doesn't it?
I'd just say the one thing that's missing from there would be, um, public amenities, um. Well, no, this isn't just about sidewalks, so he used a, he used an example of a, a PUD, uh, with an issue with the sidewalk not having been installed. Um, you know, decades ago, um, as part of the, the PUD.
Alright. Give folks a minute or two to review the newly provided content, not new, but for reference.
So should we, um, table this and?
So my, I guess my question here is, is that the need to discuss this today on a not regularly scheduled commission meeting? Is the question of, is what hindrance does tabling require?
Yeah, look at Mike.
I mean, we're, 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 we were here because I asked them to move it faster, um, it's, it's not on staff, it's on me, um, the. If, if, if we were to do some tweaking, it, it wouldn't be the end of the world and if we brought it back at our next. Um, PC meeting with the updates that the commission would like to see, I think that would be acceptable, what, what I was more concerned about is if. If we brought it in April and then we weren't to have more changes until May, and then it kind of kept getting pushed down at that point.
Sure. Understood, but one more month wouldn't?
Well, I mean, really, at this point, it's two weeks. Oh, we don't have an April meeting.
Oh, we're not?
Oh, okay.
Oh, so there's your May.
There's, okay.
Alright, so if we re, reworded the, um. The actual, um, statement to be a little bit more broad.
More, you're, you're looking for more flexibility for the planning director.
I, I see after reading it a couple of times, I, I like the generic term that you're using in there, I, I think improvements is really good, but I. I do agree, like, we gotta wait until the whole thing's done, um, in order to get that occupancy. Okay, so that's where you're going with that, right?
And I, and I understand that it, our zoning administrator is saying he's interpreting that it gives him the discretion. Me as the, the, the policymaker, I do not see that discretion built in there or allowed, and so. That could create, I don't know, I, I, I'm. I like, I'm, I'd better prefer precision and, um, I think it could create potential conflicts in the future, you know, um, saying, hey. This is what your zoning, uh, law says, our zoning administrator's not adhering to it, and I, and I'm sure I'm gonna hear that from, uh, residents about. You know, certain developments, and so that's why I would prefer the language in there to reflect the intent, um.
So, how would we do that? Because I, I think what we're trying to do is build in that during the process. That he's able to approve or disapprove, eh, going down the line, we don't want to wait until the very, very end, so we. Do we say, like, improvements during each phase, not everybody calls it a phase, um. I, that, I don't know if that would work.
That's kind of, part of the issue is, is that when the PUD is approved, it needs to be approved in a way that you can then go back and checklist it, right? So, the point is, is the phases need to be identified in a way that they're expected to be, okay.
Phases are very hard to identify and they change constantly all the time.
That's not how that, works in the real world, even though I see what you're saying.
What?
Yeah.
What, what if it was to be something that was tied to how the building department does their? Because they sign off on individual structures.
What if we said something like, and all the public improvements are reasonably completed? As a percentage of the plan?
Ooh.
Can you explain that in a different way, so that I try it one more time?
Like if you had a thousand houses being built and a huge bike path going through it.
Yep.
I'm not gonna make the bike path go through it. On the first house, the first second occupancy, because the bike path would get damaged every time a house is getting built. So something with the word reasonable in it, or reasonably. They are on the, with assurance that they are on a reasonable path to complete the project.
I like that because it also shows the discretion that the staff would have. On taking into account things like if you were to build. All the sidewalks all at once, then when you're building each individual house, the sidewalks are gonna get destroyed, so there's no point in putting it in until the house is done. Um, and so, that reasonable word. Applied with the professional review of the planning staff, gives them that ability to explain back to. Me as the manager of the city commission or the planning commission, this is what I saw as reasonable and here's why.
And in the sidewalk example, you know, if you have a development of a hundred houses, chances are you aren't building all of them. Sometimes there's five houses that don't get built and they get built later, so you don't want to be able to say, well, we can't build the sidewalks until they're all in, right? So, we have to have some.
So if we said reasonable progress, yes, is that what you're thinking, reasonable?
Reasonable progress towards completion of all aspects of the plan?
And that's kind of what we're coming back to, is, is everything moving forward, the question is, is everything moving forward? And not getting left behind.
Well, I think that's, that's where the, the professional staff comes into play on how they. On, on using their expertise on how development works and construction works and, and, and those type of things, and being able to document like, hey, this part isn't done. But as you go forward, you know, we're not gonna issue the next C of O, or we're not gonna issue, um. You know, or this is a conditional C of O, and you've got sixty days to, to finish this other aspect of it, we, we do that in the building department all the time, where you get a. Uh, thirty or sixty, I think nineties as far as they go, um, unconditional CFOs, it's been a while since I've had one. Um, but you could do, now for residential, that's a whole nother thing, but. But it's, it's about the communication process with the developer from, from the staff, and I, I think what. To go back to the example that Mike was giving at the beginning of the conversation at Harbertown was. Because we didn't have that check-in and communication with staff, the, the planning staff and city commission made one approval. And then it went to the building department and they've got a different purview and it was all done to that standard, but we didn't go back and look at this other standard.
Is the whole thing coming to completion?
Yeah, and this is giving the planning staff the, another tool to go back and say that, because right now. They, you know, Mike could go, hey, you know, they didn't finish this, and we're like, well, we didn't give you any authority to tell us that they had to finish it.
How do we incorporate the letter of credit concept into this? So I think we, we've kind of moved the language into the reasonable, right, like adjusting with a reasonable expectation, do we have to?
I think it's already in there, yeah.
Do you, with the, um. Performance that you was talking about, the letter that they have to sign, do you think of that as a deterrent? Because when the developer was up here, he was saying like how they can sometimes run out of money and things like that, that's why they won't finish with all the PUD plans. Is that, have you seen that?
Uh, I, so I, I think that, that does come up as a concern, um, and that's why in the, in my previous community, I think we only did it once. Um, as that letter, um, and it was letter of credit, which was a lower. Threshold for the property owner as far as what the cost is, and I don't remember what all logistics are, I'm not, um, banking person. But, um, the, the actual amount of money that they put in to that was much lower, um.
But it wasn't nothing.
It wasn't nothing, yeah.
The point is, is here is when you have especially a very valuable piece of property, that again, the public is supporting. You know, things based on future expectations, it's, it's focusing on being able to assure that the future expectation has some opportunity. To continue if the developer does in fact have to, you know, move on to something else. Um, I'm just wondering how, if we can move that into practice, if we have not been doing it in the past.
Well, I, I think.
Yeah, it's already there, um.
So.
As a tool.
If I'm.
He's thinking, yeah.
I like the word improvements and I like reasonable. And then progress.
So what I would suggest is. The zoning administrator shall ensure reasonable progress is being made to comply with all of the provisions and requirements of the PUD, plan and construction and placement of all of the improvements therein. Before a certificate of occupancy is issued for any building within the PUD. And then adding a, a sentence of before a certificate of occupancy can be issued for the final building. Or buildings, news slash S, of a PUD, the zoning administrator shall ensure complete compliance, um. With all the provisions and requirements of the PUD, so it gives that flexibility, like if you're seeing practice to be made, you can issue the certificate of occupancy. And then you're at the end of the, the PUD and you're like, here's the final building, okay, you have to demonstrate, or you have to have completed all of the improvements before that. Final C of I, uh, or CFO can be, can be issued.
Does that work for you, Mike? Alright, we got a green light.
We would need to amend motion, um.
I think you just, you could just say, uh, uh, motion, or, yeah, fr- friendly amendment as presented by the mayor.
You'd like a friendly amendment as presented by the mayor?
Yes.
Okay.
And Jill will friendly support that, or support that friendly, or however you want to put that.
I'm gonna read it again.
You can't see it on the screen, if you could read it one more time.
So the revised motion as I'm suggesting is the, or I guess motion to make a friendly amendment. Uh, the zoning administrator shall ensure reasonable progress is being made to comply with all of the provisions and requirements of the PUD plan. And construction and placement of all of the improvements therein before a certificate of occupancy, uh, may be issued for. May be issued for any building within the PUD. Before a certificate of occupancy can be issued for the final building. Should we go with buildings or building, just building?
I would say building slash S.
Final PUD. Yeah, final PUD.
Final elements.
For the final elements of the PUD. The zoning administrator shall ensure com- complete compliance. With all of the provisions and requirements of the PUD plan and construction and placement of all of the improvements therein before a certificate of occupancy is issued for. Um, is issued.
It's like a four breath sentence.
It's kind of the same sentence repeated, it's just a few, um, tweaks between, um, so that.
Okay, um, having that on the floor, do we have any additional discussion on the motion generally? I do have one question, um, is there any kind of denial process change here? Whereby if you do not feel that someone has met those expectations, does it just sit until they do? Yes, okay, um, and then the landscape plan was mentioned in there, but oftentimes the landscape plan is submitted separately. And so I just wanted to.
Yeah, it comes along with the PUD.
Reiterate that that would be available before. Reiterate that that would be available before. The PUD was completed.
Yeah, it was often a prerequisite.
Okay. Alright, roll call please.
Commissioners Johnson?
Yes.
Will Appleroy?
Yes.
Cypher?
Yes.
Montgomery Keys?
Yes.
Blake, you, Anne Simmons?
Yes. You'll hit email on that? Get that over, before we change our mind, um. Okay, do we have any other items on the agenda here, any new business? Um, I think I would, real quick, just add on new business, that there is an ongoing. Um, shoreline trails and greenways planning process. Um, that we, that has had some work group meetings, but there will be additional meetings coming to the community. Um, and so that's through the West Michigan Shoreline Regional Development Commission, uh, and they are looking at shoreline trails and greenways throughout. Uh, the Muskegon area, so I would just recommend that folks follow that process and find an opportunity to participate, um. They're looking at improving everybody's access to multimodal, um, trails and to waterways.
Um, thanks for bringing up this, what I was going to share as well, and that is a, um, uh, funded and supported by the city of Muskegon, where a principal. Uh, contributed to that that process, um, to share to, so you all have, cause it was asked at the last planning commission meeting, what are the dates, some of the upcoming meetings? And so for the larger focus areas, these are the tentative dates that have been shared with me, um, Wednesday, April thirtieth, five thirty to seven PM. Um, at Unruly or Pigeon Hill, so that's TBD, I'm looking at kinda doing a happy hour, um, in partnership with the. Um, looks like the city Windsor Dick and the Chamber of Commerce, um, and that's gonna be with biking and outdoors groups. Uh, so there'll be a focused, uh, conversation there, tentatively Wednesday, April thirtieth, five thirty, seven PM, exact location TBD. Um, then the next one will be immediately the next day, Thursday, May first, and that's noon to one thirty. There'll be business, um, businesses countywide, um, will be the focus of that, um. And that looks like it will be held at Windsor Dick, the West Michigan Shoreline Regional Development Commission, over there on Morris, um. And then there will be another larger focus area, um, and that's for all residents and neighborhood groups. It looks like that's gonna be Tuesday, May thirteenth, five thirty to seven PM, uh, that location is TBD, so I just wanted to. Since it was requested at the last planning commission, like, what are the 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 schedule or timelines, um, I just wanted to share. That preliminary information, so at least you have the, um, that tentatively penciled in on your your calendars, if you're interested. Um, in participating those, uh, larger focus area groups, uh, there was a, um, engagement, um, in Muskegon Heights, um, on March thirteenth. And then one yesterday with the Muskegon Lake Watership Partnership Public Access Group, those were the smaller focus areas, um, and so. Last night was particularly, I thought engaging and productive, uh, conversation that had happened.
So I hope lots of people have the opportunity to have a similar conversation, um, do I understand or overhear that we do not have a planning commission meeting in April?
We do not.
I will cross that off my calendar.
Okay, okay, gotcha, okay, we could just meet to have fun.
However, be starting citizen planner that day. So we will still be here, s- most of us, unless you've made yourself unavailable, um, I, any other items?
Pass up for the next meeting we have in May, potentially, we will be moving to the civic clerk, so. How the commission does their meetings, city commission, we will start doing that, so each of you will have a login to that, and that is where the packet will go, so. Anne was going to set that up for everyone, so you might get an email from that civic clerk saying, you know, you now have a login. And then you would just create a password.
Okay.
Could you remind us of that by email?
Yes.
Just so that, because we're, people are used to looking for their email, would you just, I'm just like, hey, go here now.
Does that come?
Well, it, Anne, I sent her all of your emails, so those of you that aren't already set up in there will should get one, I got one and it was just, I think, from. The civic clerk site, and it just says you're now a user.
Okay.
Um, and then once you go in, it will let you set your password.
Great, I got it.
Cause I'm usually going planning commission when I'm like looking for an agenda, right, so we're all gonna forget, because it's two months from now.
Oh, I'll remember.
So that, um, expected to be May fifteenth for the planning commission meeting in May, okay, so just heads up, I'll be, um, away. So I'll be at the Great Lakes St. Lawrence Cities Conference in Milwaukee, so I will not, um, be here.
Alright, Joe, oh, you got more new business thing?
Well, no, I wanted to circle back on, when we were talking about performance guarantees and performance bonding for compliance, um, because as a, as I, um. Mentioned briefly earlier, cause this is improvements covered, improvements that shall be covered by the performance guarantee or bond include. Oh, but are not necessarily limited to, I missed that, okay, so I'm good with that then. Because I didn't see public improvements, there's streets and other roadways, utilities, fencing, screening, landscaping, common open space improvements, those are not necessarily public. Amenities, and so that's why I wanted to include public amenities in there, such as bike trails or parks or what have you. Um, and so that that was covered, but because it says not necessarily limited to, I'm good, so. Now that I've already read it and see that language, I'm good, thank you.
Would entertain, um, do, motion.
We gonna do a little public comment?
Oh, we could. Okay, thanks for having me out, alright, well, there's nobody here, so that was hard for me to remember that part, forgive me. Two, three, one, seven, two, four, six, seven, two, one, um, please give us a call, I'll give you about five minutes.
Uh, so delete that about. While we're, are we gonna have a ZBA? Oh, we won't, okay.
And when I get back upstairs, I'm gonna send it out.
I'm gonna be, I'll be MIA for that meeting.
Because the agenda keeps getting moved, we need to always sound like that in front of me, what are we doing now? Okay. The intelligent young folks we have with the city now, they could help us with our Jeopardy-like. Waiting theme music. Alright.
Alright.
Nobody's calling in over there.
No, I'll move to adjourn if anybody wants to do that.
Support.
In favor? All those opposed say no, okay, we are adjourned.
Has anybody ever said no?